Okay. Hello and welcome to this session entitled ‘Developing a multi-agency response to children and young people who are the victims of trafficking’. In this session, I will present the work undertaken by Glasgow Child Protection Committee in raising professional awareness and the development of multi-agency guidance which aims to support practitioners in the early identification and assessment of child trafficking. I will describe the journey that Glasgow embarked upon and share some of the significant learning which has taken place across all partner agencies in the city. Professionals have worked together to establish knowledge and skills in an area of practice that from the outset was challenging and new for us all. I hope this presentation will help to inform practice and stimulate future discussion and learning. In order to set the working context, it’s important to have an agreed understanding of trafficking. This has informed the approach Glasgow has taken to intervening in the protection of children and young people. First and foremost, trafficking is a child protection issue. Children who are trafficked are victims of abuse and may require child protection measures to keep them safe. In Glasgow, we use our existing multi-agency child protection procedures and processes to ensure that all children are safe and protected from future significant harm. These procedures are well established in Scotland, with all agencies contributing to the child’s assessment, which looks at the whole child, including their need to be safe and protected from future harm. Any child who is a victim of trafficking needs to have their needs fully assessed by all partner agencies who contribute to the care and protection of the child and who will be central to the development of the child’s plan and associated interventions. Trafficking is child protection and requires a child protection response, and the existing child protection system in Scotland is robust and well understood by all professionals. In defining trafficking, I would draw attention to the two elements that are required to be present in order to constitute child trafficking. The first being the transportation of the child, which may be within a country or across national borders, and the child may be a UK or foreign national. And secondly, for the purpose of exploitation, the exploitation may not have taken place as long as the intention is there. In Glasgow, we have experience of children being trafficked from a range of countries such as Vietnam, China, Eastern Europe, Malawi, Nigeria, South Africa, Uganda, Somalia, and Sierra Leone. We have also experience of working with children who have been internally moved from one part of the UK to Glasgow, and with children who have been moved more locally, either within the city or from one large city to another, such as from Glasgow into Edinburgh. In these instances, young people were being moved for the purpose of sexual exploitation. It is important that when we talk about child trafficking, we continue to emphasise that trafficking is not just across country borders, but within our own homes, towns, and villages. For the purpose of trafficking, a child is anyone under the age of 18 years. If there is any doubt about the child’s age, they will be given the benefit of the doubt and treated as a child until there is a conclusive evidence to the contrary. For traffic adults, a third element is required, that the adult is coerced. This is not necessary for children. The Polerino Protocol was ratified by the United Kingdom in 2006, and those nations signed up to this protocol are committed to combating the criminal activity of trafficking, supporting victims of trafficking, and cooperating across international borders. The United Nations focuses on the best interests of trafficked children, stating that children who are victims of trafficking shall be identified as such, their best interests shall be considered paramount at all times, and children, victims of trafficking, shall be provided with appropriate assistance and protection. Full account shall be taken of their special vulnerabilities and needs. I will briefly outline the key legislative framework within which agencies practise in order to support child victims of trafficking and to prosecute the traffickers within Scotland. The Council of Europe Convention was ratified by the UK government in 2008 and came into force on the 1st of April 2009. The purposes are to prevent and combat trafficking in human beings while guaranteeing gender equality. To protect the human rights of the victims of trafficking, design a comprehensive framework for protection and assistance of victims and witnesses while guaranteeing gender equality as well as to ensure effective investigation and prosecution, and to promote international cooperation on action against trafficking in human beings. In Scotland, the key legislation which informs all work with children and their families is the Children’s Scotland Act 1995. While this act does not directly address the issues of trafficking, its provisions covers for children who have been trafficked. Any child in Scotland, regardless of nationality or immigration status, is protected by the Act, and the local authority has a duty to make inquiries into the safety and wellbeing of the child where concerns have been identified. In Scotland, we have had few convictions for trafficking to date. There have only been three under the Criminal Justice Scotland Act. The lack of convictions is of concern, and we need to ensure that we do not focus only on keeping the child safe, but that all efforts are made through all legal processes to prosecute those who traffic, although our knowledge of traffickers is limited, and we need all partner agencies to work together. In 2000, a young person died having been in the care of the local authority for many years. She died of a drugs overdose and had been known to be the victim of sexual exploitation. She was a very vulnerable young person with a complex family history and needs. As an accommodated young person, the child protection procedures at that time were not used for young people in care, in that we did not put a child’s name on the child protection register if they were in the care of the local authority. There was an assumption that they had been removed from the risk or danger, and child protection measures were no longer necessary. Clearly since that time, we have become much more alert to the risks young people are exposed to by residing both in residential care and their local communities, and some of our most high-risk and vulnerable young people are in the care of local authority. Work commenced on developing a multi-agency procedure, and consultation took place with health, education, social work, including a range of adult services, some specialist projects within the city, the police, the procurator fiscal who in Scotland is responsible for bringing offenders to trial, UK border agencies, legal services, and the voluntary sector. The needs of vulnerable children and young people required to be at the centre of intervention, and we had to develop new ways of supporting practitioners to ensure that all aspects of risk were being considered and responded to. The Vulnerable Young Persons' Procedures identified a range of situations where children could potentially be at risk, such as self-harm, addiction, sexual exploitation, offending, and mental health. It was recognised that these procedures should be used where professionals were identifying an escalation in behaviours and an increase in risk. These were designed for high-risk situations, not for children, such as those children who may go missing for the first time. The procedures were given the equivalent status as child protection, and partner agencies were familiar with prioritising child protection over other aspects of their workload. Trafficking was included in the procedures in 2009. Nationally, across Scotland, there have been a number of research studies and information gathered by various organisations within the UK. Some of the work of the organisations such as Save the Children, CIOP, and ECPAC have informed thinking and practice. In 2009, the Home Office and in Scotland, Scottish Government, introduced the National Referal Mechanism, which required first responders to refer a child where it was known or suspected that a child was the victim of trafficking. I will refer to the National Referal Mechanism in a little more detail later in the presentation. In 2009, a group of London Safeguarding Boards came together to develop and pilot what was known as the Trafficking Assessment Toolkit. Glasgow was approached to join the pilot, and was the only Scottish authority to participate. The Toolkit was piloted, and all materials were fully evaluated and adapted as a consequence of practitioner feedback. In 2011, work was also undertaken by the Children’s Commissioner for Scotland, who published a Safe Place for Child Traffickers. And this year, Jenny Mara and MSP in the Scottish Parliament is taking forward a consultation on new human trafficking legislation. The proposed measures reflect best practices as set out in the EU in the recent directive on human trafficking. The bill consultation was launched on 11th September, and the consultation will run for three months. Day after, it is hoped that the bill will be supported and progress through the various stages prior to the legislation being enacted by the Scottish Parliament. So what did this all mean for Glasgow and how did we move forward? The issue of trafficking has been on the multi-agency agenda, and regularly the question was asked if this was an issue for us in Glasgow. But on each occasion, agencies were responding by saying that they were not identifying victims, and indeed, we had no recorded cases of trafficking either through police or by social work. In Glasgow in 2006, Save the Children, along with Glasgow Child Protection Committee, held a seminar inviting professionals from a range of services across the city. This was the first focused multi-agency discussion on the issue, and while it raised interest and was followed up by subsequent seminars, professionals were still not admitting to find children in Glasgow to be victims of trafficking. However, in the summer of 2007, there was a recognition that trafficking was a significant issue in other parts of the UK, and that while we did not have any specific evidence of this in Glasgow, we potentially were not sufficiently alert to the indicators or were not asking the right questions. It was agreed that we would undertake some very basic mapping and decided to look at unaccompanied asylum population. For all those children under the age of 16 who are unaccompanied minors, Glasgow City Council has the responsibility to provide care and support, and these young people have been accommodated in local authorities, residential children’s homes, and supported by social work and other asylum services. Glasgow is the largest metropolitan area in Scotland, and at that time was the only Scottish asylum dispersal centre with a network of services already established for asylum seekers. It had already been significant work in the city around adult trafficking through the TARA project. TARA works specifically with adult women who have been trafficked for the purposes of sexual exploitation. To date, Glasgow has undertaken three key pieces of research relating to trafficking. The first looking at potential prevalence in 2009. The second in 2010 involving discussions with professionals about their experiences of working with child victims and the issues they identified for children such as appropriate accommodation and availability of therapeutic services. The last piece of research was completed in 2012 and pulled together all areas of work which had taken place over the previous four years. This was some of the first research into trafficking to be undertaken in Scotland, and the research can be reviewed on the Glasgow Child Protection website. The first piece of research we undertook was the initial mapping and prevalence, and this was, I suppose, our wake-up call, as it indicated that we did have a number of children in Glasgow who had been the victims of trafficking. We reviewed a sample of 69 unaccompanied asylum-seeking children, and from the initial findings there was evidence that 21% had been trafficked. The indicator data sheet and case file records gave a strong indication that they had previously been trafficked. The data highlighted that a further 7% had probably been trafficked, with a further 15% suggesting the possibility of trafficking, but the indicators were less convincing. The quote from the social worker who had been interviewed as part of this process clearly articulated what was felt by the research group, that while the numbers of trafficked children were low, professionals were probably not identifying victims. We now know from practice experience that these figures were an underestimate. We set up a trafficking multi-agency working group to oversee all developments, and the group met for over three years. The group now meets less frequently, but we still meet two to three times per year to ensure that practice is being monitored and action is taken when necessary, such as updating the guidance in light of the EU directive or updating multi-agency training. This research made all agencies sit up and think, and it was agreed that we needed to set out a programme of work that would raise worker awareness, develop tools that would assist workers in identifying and assessing the needs of trafficked children, and alert senior managers across all partner agencies that this was an issue that required to be prioritised within agency work plans. Over the last few years in Glasgow, we have seen evidence of children being trafficked for a range of purposes, such as sexual exploitation, forced labour, domestic servitude, cannabis factories, criminality, benefit fraud, forced marriage. The backgrounds, journeys, and experiences of children indicate multiple types of abuse, suggesting that children are rarely trafficked for one type of exploitation, or at least susceptible to multiple abuses as a result of trafficking. This slide gives you the link to our child trafficking guidance, and all the information can be found on that link. The first guidance was drafted in 2009 and rolled out across the city. This was accompanied by multi-agency locality training sessions involving all partner agencies such as health, education, social work, police, some of our community safety services, and the voluntary sector. I have posted online an example of a training programme used to raise professional awareness and to stimulate multi-agency discussion within local areas. The guidance has been updated twice since 2009 and will be updated shortly to reflect the EU directive. Over the last four years, we have worked on three key development strands which I think are necessary when raising professional awareness. The first was the initial scoping to ensure strong evidence base for future development and to establish baseline data from which we were all able to identify key outcomes for children, such as their early identification and the appropriate interventions and services had been put in place to ensure that we were addressing the needs. And also to consider practitioner outcomes such as raised awareness, increased confidence, and shared language, and a practice base. The second key area was multi-agency training, and the initial training sessions held in 2009 have subsequently been built upon with further single and multi-agency events. Glasgow is a very large authority, and rolling out any new guidance or training is challenging due to the size of the task. Lastly was the development of the assessment framework and tools to support workers when assessing the needs of children and young people. In Scotland, we now have a national assessment practice model called GEARFIC, Getting it Right for Every Child. I do not intend to go into the detail of the framework, however, it is the practice model that all agencies use to support the assessment of needs and risk and provides a single language and planning process for children. One child, one assessment, one plan. The Trafficking Toolkit supports and complements the GEARFIC practice model. In developing the guidance, we wanted to provide practitioners with practical tools to identify and assess the needs of children who have been trafficked, while ensuring that the child’s whole needs are being addressed. The aim of the guidance was to promote the protection and support for children and young people who have been trafficked, to investigate and prosecute those who coerce, exploit, and abuse children, raise awareness of indications of child trafficking, and facilitate and encourage all staff to work collaboratively in developing and delivering appropriate and effective services for children. The guidance provides practitioners with detailed reading and information, while setting out what information needs to be gathered in order to gain a better understanding of the child’s experiences. It recognises that assessment can be a slow process, which is required to be undertaken at the child’s pace. In addition, children will very seldomly recognise their experiences to be that of trafficking and may not consider themselves as a victim. The Trafficking Indicator Matrix, along with the assessment framework, provides additional guidance for practitioners, and both are contained in the Trafficking Guidance for Reference. I will discuss these in a little more detail shortly. In order to bring the trafficking framework to life and to highlight the complex nature of child trafficking, throughout this presentation, I will make reference to key scenarios that highlight the very different circumstances that children may be exposed to. It’s important to stress that these scenarios are a composite of information from cases we have worked with. This has been done to ensure that the identities of children and young people are protected. Kyle is Scottish and is 13 years old. He was living in local authority residential care following a breakdown in his relationship with his parents. He regularly went missing for several days at a time. He was unwilling to say where he had been, but often came back with designer clothes. He had also been found in possession of alcohol. And out of the residential unit, he often spent time with a man in his twenties who Kyle said was a family friend. One evening, Kyle disclosed to one of the workers in the unit that this man was actually his boyfriend, though he said they did not have a sexual relationship. He said his boyfriend took him on trips to visit his friends, and that was where he was when he went missing. If we are assessing the need of a young person, we may wish to consider the following. What are the matrix indicators that may be relevant? Well, significantly older boyfriend, evidence of drugs, alcohol, and substance misuse, suspicion he may be sexually active, has money without a plausible explanation, he’s gone missing from local authority care, and he’s truanting from school. We need to consider the issue of movement, while Kyle has been taken on trips and we’re unsure where. The intent to exploit, well, no direct evidence, but alcohol and clothes may be a reward. Indicators of harm, relationship with an older man, periods of missing from care, and possession of alcohol. Trafficking is not just something that happens to foreign national children. In the SEUP study of 2009, British children were the second highest group identified as victims of trafficking. Where there is suspicion that a child may have been trafficked, professionals need to immediately review the information they have gathered and discuss with their line manager. In Glasgow, all potential cases of trafficking are discussed with the Central Child Protection Team which I manage, which means that we have oversight of all trafficking cases in the city. We are able to offer support and guidance to practitioners and will assist in completing the National Referal Mechanism if this has been the decision of the multi-agency meeting. Where a worker has suspicions that a child has been trafficked, or the child tells a worker they have been trafficked, it is important to consider what information should be shared with a parent or carer, just as would be the practice when responding to a child protection referral. If the parent or carer is potentially implicated in the trafficking, it would not be appropriate to discuss the child with them, as this may put the child at greater risk. Practitioners should use the matrix to help them to identify indicators of trafficking and to support the completion of the trafficking assessment. Where a partner agency has concerns about a child, they should make it a referral to social work. The child trafficking assessment should be completed, and all agencies known to the child should support this process, sharing any information they may have to help to inform the assessment and to capture the full range of the child’s needs. The child trafficking assessment covers a range of issues, including such things as movement, the abuse, the trafficker, if there is anything known, the means of control, identified risk factors, the views of the young person, and an overall analysis of risk and need. The matrix, which I know is not very clear in terms of this slide, but talk a little about the matrix and how we use the matrix. The Indicator Matrix identifies factors that may be present for a child who has been trafficked. This cannot identify that a child has been trafficked, rather it highlights when trafficking should be considered as a possibility. Many of the indicators cover broad areas of risk for a child. Those which are particularly relevant to trafficking are those indicating movement, coloured in yellow, or exploitation, highlighted in red. The matrix should be used to identify risk factors that are present or suspected for a child. If a cluster of concerns are identified, or if any of the indicators of movement or exploitation are identified, then there should be further action to assess whether the child has been trafficked or is at risk of abuse. Mercy is 14 years old, from the Ivory Coast. Her parents died two years ago, and she lived with a range of relatives since that time. She was brought to the UK five months ago, being told she would be getting married when she arrived here. She stayed in London with a Ugandan woman and several other children. She did not attend during this time. She travelled to Glasgow by bus a few weeks ago. She expected to be met by someone, although she did not know their name, who would introduce her to the man she was to marry, but there was no one at the bus station to meet her. She slept rough in the city centre for a few nights until she met by chance with a woman who came from her own home village. This woman took Mercy home with her. A few days later, she took Mercy to accident and emergency as Mercy had had an asthma attack. She had not been registered with a GP since she arrived in the UK, and she did not have any medication for her asthma. Again considering the matrix indicators, there was issues of proposed or underage forced marriage. She was unable to confirm the name and address of the person meeting her on arrival. She was one among a number of unrelated children at an address in London, in a private fostering arrangement that had not been registered, and she had not been registered with a GP practice. Movement, where we have evidence of travel from the Ivory Coast and evidence of travel within the UK. Intent to exploit, where the issue was she was coming to this country to marry. Indicators of harm, lack of school attendance, sleeping rough, unregistered private fostering arrangement, and a lack of medical care. Mercy is 16, and so if she was agreeing to the plan to be married, it would be illegal in this country and therefore constitute trafficking. Although she was not met on arrival, someone who came from her own home village soon met up with her. This is very unlikely to be coincidental. It is possible her current carer is also a victim of trafficking, who has been coerced into looking after child victims of trafficking. Zhang Ping is 23 from China. She presented at her local health centre, where she was not registered and was nearly eight months pregnant. She had no prenatal care. Zhang Ping spoke little English and was accompanied by a man who was translating for her. She had no means of identification. The man stated that Zhang Ping had lived in the UK for several years, had only just moved to Glasgow. She was unable to give details of any previous addresses or medical treatment she had received. Again considering the matrix indicator, she had no passport or other means of identification. She claims to have been in the UK for years but hasn’t learnt the language, and she was reluctant to give personal details. Movement, where there was travel from China and then within the UK to Glasgow. Indicators of harm, late presentation, lack of information in terms of her previous medical career. Although Zhang Ping is an adult, she herself may have been trafficked, and the baby may therefore be also vulnerable. This case was considered under our procedures for vulnerable pregnant women, and Zhang Ping was assisted with accommodation, finances, and health support. We tried to establish further detail about her whereabouts before and needed to establish if there were any links to be made with UKBA. Work was undertaken to try and identify who the male figure was in attendance, and there was a concern that once the baby was born, Zhang Ping would disappear, as had been the pattern in other such cases of young Chinese women giving birth and disappearing. Consideration needed to be given to the safety of Zhang Ping, but also we had to consider the safety of the unborn child. The following information should be provided in support of any referral to social work. Agencies are advised if they do not have the full information, this is not a problem. They do not need to be able to answer all these questions to make the referral, they should provide what information they have today. In undertaking an assessment, we are looking for agencies to gather as much information as is available relating to the circumstances or the details of their contact with the child, what supporting evidence they have in terms of the risk matrix indicators, provide any other relevant information that be important such as details of behaviour, abuse, and neglect, and movements into, within, or out of the UK, including any dates if these are known. Name of any adults who are exploiting or trafficking, again if known, and any action taken including referral to other agencies such as the police, local authorities, missing persons, NGOs, etc. Provide any method of entry details where the subject was a foreign national. If there are confused stories, or the child or young person’s story has changed over time, this information should be fully recorded, as the change in stories can themselves help contribute to the overall evidence of trafficking. Once social work have received a referral for a possible trafficking case, they will treat it as child protection referral and follow local procedures. In a case of suspected trafficking, the first step is to convene a multi-agency case discussion under the Vulnerable Young Person’s Procedures chaired by social work services. Due to the sensitivities, the case should be considered as a case discussion before any action is taken. The case discussion should involve all relevant agencies. If there are any immigration questions, UK border agencies should attend this meeting. Glasgow has a good working relationship with UK border agency, who now attend such meetings on a regular basis. Prior to the meeting, the social work will complete the child trafficking assessment. At this time, there may be minimal information, but this should be incorporated into the trafficking assessment, and this will be added to as new information becomes available. The case discussion will consider whether to make a referral to the National Referal Mechanism. I will say a little more about this shortly. The meeting will focus on issues of risk and need, and a plan will be put in place to address the identified risks and needs. The National Referal Mechanism is a national mechanism for identifying and recording traffic victims, both children and adults. It has been in operation since the 1st of April 2009. Referrals can be made by identified first responders, and in Glasgow, this must be the police or social work. It is normally completed jointly. In practice, it will generally be made following a case discussion to allow full discussion and information sharing. All referrals are sent to the competent authority, which is the United Kingdom Human Trafficking Centre. If there is an immigration issue, then UKHTCU will send the referral to the UKBA. The first decision is whether there are reasonable grounds to believe that the child is a potential victim of trafficking. This decision should be made within five days, and the threshold for decisions at this stage is from the information available so far, I believe, but cannot prove that the individual is a potential victim of trafficking. If there is a positive, reasonable ground decision, the referer and the referred person will both be notified by letter. The referred person will be given safe accommodation if necessary, and there will be a 45-day recovery and reflection period. The children under 16, if unaccompanied, they will be in the care of the local authority. After 45 days, a conclusive ground decision will be made. The competent authority can gather more information during this period. The threshold for a conclusive decision is that on the balance of probability, it is more likely than not that the individual is a victim of human trafficking. The referer and referred person will be notified in writing. If a positive conclusive ground decision is made, the referred person may be granted discretionary leave to remain and help the police within Clive. This is for a year and can be extended. If there are no criminal proceedings ongoing, the referred person may be granted discretionary leave to remain, depending on their circumstances. If they wish to return to their own country, they may be given support to do so. Children under 16 years automatically have leave to remain, so a conclusive trafficking decision does not impact on their immigration status as it does for adults. Currently, there is significant debate around the status of the National Referal Mechanism in relation to protecting children. From a practice perspective, the NRM does not protect children, and it will be local child protection procedures that keep children safe. If a negative conclusive decision is received, this should not impact on the plan for the child, as a multi-agency risk assessment has previously been undertaken, and the professionals view that the child was an actual or potential victim of trafficking. In Glasgow, the decision to refer to the NRM is made via the multi-agency case discussion, and we have been surprised at some of the negative decisions received in light of the comprehensive assessment undertaken. We have a database in Glasgow of all children where trafficking has been. We have a database in Glasgow of all children where trafficking concerns have been identified, and to date, we have around two hundred young people. Some of these young people came to the attention of social work prior to the implementation of the NRM. To date, we have submitted fifty-three child NRM referrals. And of those fifty-three, we have had forty-one positive reasonable grounds with six negative reasonable grounds. Of the forty-one positive grounds, twenty-one of those young people went on to be given positive conclusion, conclusive grounds. However, thirteen young people were given a negative decision, and in six cases, we are still awaiting a decision. We are therefore currently managing fifty-three children under child protection procedures where multi-agency assessment has concluded that they believe the child to be the victim of trafficking. However, the competent authority only agrees with Glasgow in thirty-eight percent of these cases. The process often takes much longer than forty-five days. If a child is identified as a victim of trafficking, they should have a full needs and risk assessment and continue to be supported as appropriate. The following issues are particularly relevant for trafficking victims. Age assessment: This can be a contentious issue. If the child is assessed as a victim of trafficking and claims to be under eighteen, they will be treated as such unless there is a conclusive evidence to the contrary. Age of the child: Trafficking is a crime that affects both children and adults. There is however a key difference in the assessment of trafficking in relation to children. There is no need to prove, provide evidence that traffickers have coerced the victim in any way, which is necessary in relation to adult victims. This means that even if a child is apparently compliant with the traffickers, it is still a crime of trafficking and can therefore be acted on by relevant agencies. Safety: This is of great importance to young people. Each case needs to be considered separately. If possible, there should be consideration of moving children to another town. They may need a high level of emotional as well as physical security in their home. Any adults having contact with young people should be checked out. Issue of safe accommodation and children going missing. There is no national model for safe accommodation for child trafficking victims. The most important thing is to identify a place they will be safe and unlikely to be moved again. Given the likelihood of this, however, it is vital to get key information such as name, nationality, date of birth, a photograph, as quickly as possible, so the child can be identified as a missing person and chased if possible. In Glasgow, we have not experienced children going missing in the way that other areas across the UK have identified. Foster care should be considered where available. Carers should be given training, support and be aware of the issues for trafficked children. Children should be given information about how to get back in touch if they do run away, such as relevant phone numbers. Education: Children may need additional support for learning to cover gaps in education and learning of English. Information should be shared with key school staff only. Health includes physical and mental health. It may take months or years for the trauma of the child's experiences to be known. Language: Interpreters can be used to assist in communication. However, the child may be concerned that the interpreter may know their trafficker or have links with their home community. Either way, this can inhibit a young person. Immigration status: If the child is trafficked, their immigration status should not affect their care. A positive conclusive grounds decision should lead to leave to remain. Traffickers can come back months later to re-engage with the child. The child may have developed a close relationship with the trafficker and may be lured back. Alternatively, they may be frightened and not feel that they can get away. Workers must be aware of the complex relationship with the trafficker and allow the child to talk about this honestly. If the child has engaged in any criminal activity, they should not be dealt with as a offender but as a victim of crime. In Scotland, we have experience of young Vietnamese males being convicted of a crime, having been found in housing, growing cannabis. They were imprisoned, these young men were victims and not criminals. Children may wish to make links with other people from their ethnic faith group. However, they may wish to stay away from these groups, as they may be concerned that their trafficker may find out about where they are. The child themselves should be the guide on this. Ownership of their story: The child may have been told by the trafficker to tell different stories at different times. They should now be given support to take ownership of their own story. Where information has to be shared about the child, they should be told who knows and what they know. Where there is no need, it is for the child to decide what to share. For example, when moving to a new school, the child should be supported to decide what they will tell their classmates about what has happened to them. Return home: If the child wishes to return home, this should be assessed to see if it is a safe option. CFAB can be used to conduct assessments in the country of origin, although this will involve cost to the requesting authority. Practical issues and challenges: While does the NRM contribute to the protection of children? It is our view in Glasgow that it does not. It is the child protection system that protects the child. A negative decision may impact on a child where there are asylum issues. But as they will have automatic leave to remain until eighteen years, there is already a safety mechanism in place for those vulnerable young people. Discussion is taking place in Scotland at the moment as to whether the NRM actually does provide any additional protection for the child, and our view in Glasgow is that it does not. Child trafficking does not always take priority. In a number of local areas, trafficking will not be considered to be a priority as the number of children identified is very small in comparison to the number of children at risk of other forms of abuse being worked with by agencies. It can be difficult to bring the issue of trafficking to the forefront and managers and practitioners thinking. International social work and cultural awareness: We need to be able to link and establish with a range of partner agencies and NGOs. It may be necessary to contact services in the child's home country if the child is wanting to return home, and linking with such organisations as we've spoken about previously as CFAB can assist in this process. It is important that workers are aware of cultural issues, as this also informs the assessment process and gaining an understanding of what the child may have experienced in their home country and also the trafficking journey. It is vital that agencies communicate with one another. It is often only when pieces of the information are put together that suspicions emerge. Early and full information sharing will increase the chances of protecting children. The validity of the indicators and the dilemma between evidence and suspicion is a real practice tension. It is very difficult to get concrete evidence that a child has been trafficked, especially the earlier they are identified. Workers should try to gather as much evidence as possible, but they should nonetheless act on their suspicion quickly, as the child may be at risk of further movement. There can be a tension for workers who would normally take their time to build up a relationship with the child before seeking information about traumatic experiences. Whatever happens, the welfare of the child must be paramount. Confidentiality: Early and full information will increase the chances of protecting children. The child's right to confidentiality needs to be maintained. However, the sharing of information is the only way that a full picture of the child's needs and experiences can be created. The child's consent to information sharing should be sought, and they should be as engaged as they are able to be in the information sharing process. So I suppose what are the key messages that I would want to take forward today? What we would want to stress that child trafficking is child abuse. All agencies need to work together to raise awareness and to improve practice. Practice tools need to be constantly refined and updated, and practice needs to be supported by research and inquisitive practice. These are the contact details for myself and my colleague in the Child Protection Team in Glasgow. I hope this presentation has given insight into the range of activities necessary to support practitioners to gain knowledge and skills in a challenging new area of work such as child trafficking. Thank you for your time.